Yes.
This is my view.
All the children in town should be allowed to more honor than you probably think.
That's good. I agree with this. I'm glad. I guess I get that before the crowd just here. I hope they've been behind it. I think I was thinking about that. And then he. Um, James and he made. Oh, I see. My very own. Yes. I've been doing. Where are you? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. He's not getting paid. That's what I'm sorry. Yeah. So yeah. Yeah. I'm just. They're not in here. They're not with us. Oh, yeah. I'm a kid. They're just getting. I'm pretty young, but it's. But it's funny. Yeah. Every time. Yeah. God, you know, like so. One thing. I mean, so they can really point. Bring that up. Well, that's. I don't know. I'm. Yeah. Well, I think. You start. Well, you say. One, yeah. You got. We had lots. She's there. She gets to there. Yeah. And this is my little. I have to leave. Yeah. 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 Oh, yeah. You mean. Well, it's. I thought. I thought. It's. It's going to kill. And this house is down. We're calling all the. That's. If you're lead us in the intervention.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, come to you today, some of the servants. We ask for your supreme guidance, leadership, as we conduct this meeting. Lead us to all the right things for the citizens and the town of Silver City. And allow us to leave here. All on good terms.
And. And. I didn't. I didn't. I just said, you know. The. I just needed to. To. I played. Let's. I think. I think. I said it's under. Excuse me, for color, which is fans on the. On your dial. Invisible. Because it's being justice for all. I miss the break. Please. And. This is. Yeah.
Silver City Mission's Day. Advance framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and in the day.
Mr. Brown, if you will lead us in the vision statement.
Silver City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
The adjustments to the agenda.
You are mayor. Uh, in the on your table is an immediate agenda. And what we want to do is add six point two in their whole business part of branch agreements, state of the geez. Uh, you know, separate handout repay.
Thank you much, and we approve the adjustments to the agenda.
Sir.
They moved the proper second that we approved the adjustments to the agenda. All that table there, be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All posts are in the same right here, none of which care.
Make your motion to approve the agenda.
So they moved the proper second that we approved the agenda. All that table there, be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All posts have the same right here, none of which care.
Make your motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir.
They moved the proper second that we approved the consent agenda. All that might be known by sign of that.
Aye.
All the polls have the same right here, none of which care. It's all that you have one sign up.
You don't.
I'm running along. Friends and best. I didn't matter. Uh, first presentation is all preparation and I have a new meeting report. Uh, part preparation record. How would you want them? Rather. Thank you. Um, yeah, man, I appreciate you, uh, let me share while shooting me love. Um, so I want to, uh, for my advisory committee net. Uh, right before, um, the big year, the topic come up with time recommendations for you all. Um, we were able to use it for a successful, uh, meeting and we came up with a recommendation.
Hold on one second, we're trying to get it to load.
Just getting that ready, I'll do some time too. Um, so our advisory committee, uh, has struggled to meet some requirements, uh, some. Uh, we were able to have five meetings this, uh, past year. Um, the last one being it was, uh, early December. Um, both of them transitioned with, uh, my, uh, member. And I actually have one case. But, uh, we just made ready the first recommendation, um, with, uh, with that rebuild plan to the public gym. However, they want to have considerations, uh, pertaining to the break part master plan to have center involved. Maybe looking at oxygen where we could fit that right center and the gym rebuild plan together. Um, maybe that's how we're acting, maybe that's a great possibility. Maybe they're utilizing those efforts and planning budgets, maybe, uh, through one facility instead of one parade of future, uh, flip plan or. This building is smaller than any kind of prepared to the future growth like that solid. Um, another recommendation they had was to, uh, look at adopt the park or adopt the greenway program. Uh, a few other means, how even other, uh, county governments, uh, have programs set in place, whether that's a business or a community member wants to give access to beauty. Uh, and it's not the park or greenway. Maybe we set up parameters to have like a totally cleanup or, uh, things of that nature or, uh, maybe they want to donate a bench in honor of and then help clean up. Uh, different things like that, looking at this type of adopt the park program. Um, but our recommendations is looking at a volunteer program. Uh, when we say volunteer, right now, a big volunteer, the coaches, but we want to share our perspective and talk through the book of volunteers, whether it's. A project we have or, uh, facility needs or something needs we have. Looking at a volunteer program, whether that's, you know, a liaison or us helping with training for volunteers, helping for volunteers. It is having a well, twenty ten of pop to give off. And it's. The. Uh, training. Which is important. Another, uh, they had was adding a new special event that's, uh, hasn't been around in Silver City maybe, uh, very recently is the five K run. Uh, they can get be a, a good impact of the community as well, bring, uh, some, uh, generate a little bit of revenue for the town and the farm.
We used to, uh, the last problem used to go five K, far as we. Kind of, I think it dropped out, but I think you might could talk to them about. Doing a, doing that for to bring that back. Appreciate that.
Um, I am too. I'm also going to look at the, uh, Pittsburgh, okay, because they're pretty successful with their Christmas holiday, they're going reindeer run. Um, potentially, uh, another recommendation was the dog park, uh, maybe looking at a location of break park because we had a lot of money. Uh, we're looking at, uh, uh, parks linear downtown sheltering distance for a lot of, whether you live or comment. You may need a, you need more, uh, in very fun. But just thinking about a dog park, a small breed, animal breed. And that would be this is my. And that is all I have for. Or do they? Do you want to pick? I think.
I have a question. Okay. Uh, you mentioned volunteer peers. Um, how, how do you get a, um?
Come. Well, right now, our biggest volunteer, volunteer coaches, uh, whether it's, uh, they register their own did. Or it's a community member that gets back to the beauty by coaching. Uh, usually it's, you know, we have a handful that are just dedicated to the community and develop the time to be a coach. A lot of times we're having to ask parents to, um, pitch in and be a coach. Um, help us out because if we don't have volunteer coaches and we just challenge the program.
Don't even read background checks.
Yes. We have a background check, uh, we have a, the processes and we have a, we have a coach's application. Uh, we haven't filled it out, we turn it in the HR, we do a background check. And, uh, we go. Make sure there's a mayor's, uh, uh, two immigrant community violence meetings. So we're. Remarried to the survivors. People.
Good evening, English members.
Well.
Uh, thank you, one friend. Um, for, um, a sweet briefing and update with me. I have a sign, we should, one of our members, newest members, uh, that employed. Black here. Um, I wanted to just briefly remind all of the purpose of our committee. And because it's just always important for us to remember where our conversation was coming from, where our, um, activities started from. Um, our main purpose is to make, uh, the little nations, make recommendations to you. For the, uh, implementation of the side activity action plan for immigrant interaction in integration, otherwise known as a. Uh, the town Silver City partnered with local residents and years of the community in two thousand nineteen to release a job. That I can have in twenty twenty one, y'all approved our committee. Um, and now we are currently four members. We are, uh, we do have one vacancy, we can only on a quarterly basis. Uh, last time we met was in November. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it along to any sort of she can share with y'all a little bit of, uh, what we were up to.
Because here we have three things we have to get to, we've done working on. Um, number one would be the next year we project priorities, which we are looking to intensify the greenway. Um, ways that we're looking at it is by, uh, presenting a map to demonstrate the entire greenway. Um, but also specifically demonstrating or adding some color with these things optics that specifies which, um. Which section is what that way on the, uh, is more accessible to users and also has a better experience for the user. Uh, we're also working on a bi-level community resource guide that would be available to the town and also to the county. Um, this by level community source side will include different organizations, department, and what each organization, department provide for the community. Um, we're going to make this as well for the community residents in Silver City, uh, either through partners distributing these, um, guides or. Um, available in our town website.
I'm gonna put on, I took, put a pin on the check and plan.
Is, this year we have also been a part of, um, different community, um, events such as the big ID drive. Um, we joined EDH and the Silver City Department and the Sheriff's Department, uh, on their core drive this year. Um. And then we also want to give you a thank you for adopting the, it's about the heritage month population. Um. This year being celebrated with the liturgy place as well on their annual, um, spending heritage month. We also were a part of the national media, uh, along with Silver City Police Department, uh, with the organizations such as Core, uh, Blood Chatum. Um, Chatum. Public Health Department, um, Second Blue. And then I, and I have participated in that in a long time.
Um, I do want to, um, honor. A timing, okay. Uh, but I wanted to just kind of bridge out the validity of the history of the community of the town. Um. When we said two thousand nineteen, that each party had a conversation about this action plan. Many of the activities that our community has been doing has been, these are organic. Um, it's naturally, I have a memory of the community. As you can see, um, one of the things that I knew was sharing about the kind of E drive. Um, they're going on to, I believe, the fifth one, um, in April, which is also an item that essentially, um. We're looking at how Silver City is going to take the lead, but of course, there's always going to be, you just see that involvement, uh, with community based organization. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to bring your attention, there are so many other items in this action plan that we need to start. Um, two very specific that I definitely want to, um, point out to y'all is by, by general communication, it's the disaster relief plan. And the implementation of it. Um, I'll give you, there's gotta be with one point three, three point four, and seven point three. Um, that plan, the action plan is in the, um, totally what, right? Um, but the importance of a plan, we want to make sure that all our community members are aware of what the plan is of, 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 of the emergency. Um, unfortunately, there are other, uh, communities that even smaller than us that have had other, uh, properties. Because there hasn't been a, an assessment way to communicate to all of the residents. Uh, that ties along with the landing Jackson's plan, because there are so many other things that the town, um, you know, is, is geared in, in, in the direction of both. That we need to start thinking ahead and creating that plan and prioritizing what you can sort of, that you're gonna have. Rather than be available not only for English teachers and, and non, and English teachers alike. Um, and then the other big, um, item is, um, on their housing. Um, that is something that, again, as we're growing, there's, there's, we see that it's basically for it. In terms of, there being awareness and communication around housing resources and issues. Those are from items five point one and five point eight in the action plan. Um, three things that really stand out in that section is that there is that need for the town Silver City to formally, uh, appoint a fair housing, uh, on the budget. Also, focusing, uh, um, not only increasing, uh, but maintaining effort regarding tenant rights and network responsibilities, uh, in addition to resources. Um, and also pretty legal services for all tenants regardless of their implications that is consistent with housing for violations, housing discrimination, and lies. Again, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well. Some key points here out of that to call out, I mean, it's the housing and I'm at this discussion with. The manager, some of the board members on the photo ID. The ID part, along with the chief. As a town adopting that as a form of ID, we have attended those, uh, seminars. And, uh, I'm just waiting for the board to, uh, come together and greenlight. So we can start in writing. Uh, as far as the, um. Housing, some of them are deplorable. And, um, so tenant rights across the board for everybody, I think, is what we should be looking at in that area. Because some people are never going to squall on this saying. But, um, that's another thing and policy, I guess, that we should take a very close look at because, uh. Many of us would even attempt to admit that somebody solved. And so, uh, we need to make sure that we check here of our residents. Nothing else, we will continue downtown about the one three. Five point three.
Thank you, ma'am. Invite Christie, uh, Barbara, she's a member of P H, she's been in her work this year.
Thanks.
Hello.
Okay, um, that's, uh, random nations from our twenty twenty four. Our biggest thing is the dissolution of the downtown advisory committee. And our members will integrate into the Silver City Development Organization. Skidoo, which will serve as the town's partners for implementing downtown private symbols. We talked a lot, we're very passionate about combining the two organizations to make us stronger and go in work for downtown Silver City. Uh, moving, our second recommendation is moving forward, the town board will approve all of Skidoo's annual work plans to ensure alignment with its objectives. Upon its acceptance into the Main Street program, but by following its four-point approach model. Skidoo will operate as the Main Street organization for Silver City, effectively streamlining the town's agenda with those of the current act and Skidoo. The biggest thing, this will not require monetary commitment from the town to Skidoo. Our third recommendation is to hire a downtown coordinator who will work with Skidoo to implement the town's vision for downtown. This for, this position will transition into the Main Street coordinator, should Silver City be accepted into the program. And having a Main Street coordinator will strengthen our fourth recommendation, which we strongly recommend that we submit an application to door, to join the Main Street program in twenty twenty five. Our group, um, we've had meetings with Skidoo, that and Skidoo are all very eager for the two of us to join, um, and working together. Um, we want to, uh, each month report to commissioners and let you know what's working on going on. And if you'll go to our last slide, so that I can give you a general idea of how it works. We've got at the bottom the work plan. And then we've got four different committees. We've got the promotion committee, the, uh, design committee, economic vitality, and organization. And all of those, the two different ones on each side will have committee chairs. Those committee chairs will then report to the, uh, Skidoo Board of Director. And. After that, they will report to the Main Street Coordinator. And between the Skidoo and Main Street, they will report to the Town Board. But the Skidoo Board of Director will be the one who comes and reports to the Board of Directors. Uh, to the town commissioners. We're all very, very excited. We really, really hope that you will consider this and the dissolution of the Act and letting us do my mission.
How many, how many people are on the, um, board?
That we only have five. Skidoo has. Five, five. Any questions?
Well, I do that one for, uh, manager. And we've heard several recommendations, at what point will we actually take action on these recommendations?
You think that a merger retreat, I'll tell you all the names of these. And anytime the board gives correction beyond that.
So I guess we should have started from Parks and Rec through, um, the, the last advisory committee and this one to say move forward and do this and that or whatever. Rather than just hearing a report and no action.
That, that's up to the board. So the, the, the purpose of the committee is to provide information, we say, and so it's typically how we do this. Um, if any action is needed, we see, we won't do the rest, so it's fine, we don't have to do that. The other line we have.
I think in the past, I want you to bring that prior to budget work, things that had zero dollar cost.
Which would be this one and the previous. I don't think there's any monetary costs in, uh, Eva or those two from what I heard, I mean, this round.
And I'll say this, just for one of these, uh, Senator Martin, our comedian, I'm planning, she's prepared a presentation. Having mentioned for following up the Main Street program, and it's gonna be more in-depth information provided to the board. From the twenty, hoping, and you're related and you follow it pretty quickly. Others are taking notes. And they put something together on the twenty first, or our budget retreat meeting is gonna be on Monday, first Monday, fourth Monday, Sunday, so that would be another day off you to talk about.
Well, as Mayor Prokent said, if, if it's not a monetary thing, it's something you're waiting for the budget. I mean, we just move forward with it and, and start to implement these programs because we, the year, this year will go out of category. And we have other things in front of us that, that will, that are.
Well, I think the only two things on this one is recommendation one and two.
Yeah.
Uh, but with the dissolution, D A C and elevation to do the, I think that. Do we need to read the, I mean, uh, do we need to read the policy on the dissolution of a, of a committee? And we got a manual on that.
We do have a, I'm a community policy, that's right.
Name. Make sure our compliance with the manual dissolution. I haven't read that man at all.
And staff, you might bring back those items in next meetings, they're something that, uh, would be a little in the calls and maybe more consider being that. If they've already blessed that.
All right, and we have a budget meeting on then.
It will be activated. It's the active.
Well, we can, so he can revisit that one at the first, and that right there.
Forty seven, Simon and the group. Yes, yes.
Jack, I thought we had already submitted an application to the downtown Main Street program. Did that last year? We discussed that.
We talked.
We talked about it.
Okay. One of them.
You know what, they just say, and what is, and what, what is, what's going on with it?
Did you, did you also handle that?
Sarah will come up and help with that.
I have an idea, thanks, Sarah. It's a.
Just to be clear, the question inside. Um, plus we need more, we're at with the application from those.
I think it was the application itself.
The application itself.
Yeah, there's many of the initial papers.
So the application itself, to my best knowledge, uh, will only be provided to those who attend the Main Street conference in March, which will be held eleven through the thirteenth. Registering for that conference, it opens this Friday, on the tenth. Uh, so you will be registering to.
How many people are we allowed to send to the conference?
Uh, the more it is, the better. I don't know what, I don't know what's, um. I don't know. I would.
There's a what?
There's a budget, they're interested in.
So for each person, yes, okay.
So Sarah's the one.
Well, we, I don't know, someone will have any.
And I'm happy. And for team.
Okay. And then after that, we get to submit our.
Correct. Uh, it was more.
There's one other case that you could be bringing from the, uh, so resolution of what kind of group. A solution for to make the application. And she would do that following our regulation. Um, on sale. Unbelievable.
And you're gonna, you're gonna give more, uh, details about the roles of the Main Street Coordinator?
Oh, yeah.
Is that part of them? Cool, thank you.
Point backwards, back to the recommendation from the other advisory committee. And the things that they had set forth, uh. What do we stand on there and what would be, uh. The reason for not going ahead and accepting our recommendations is probably part.
Have you, but what I'll put together, I, I proposed, well, the recommendations that we recommend. And, and I think Commissioner Faden said that for no cost, we ran it in front of the, so one, two.
I think the mayor also speaking about the other two.
Yes.
Advisory boards. Um, now some of the stuff that you were speaking of wasn't in your memo. So for those things that you were speaking of, that weren't in the memo, if you could please give some cost projections to Jack. So that he can have that available for us by the team first. Thank you.
Now, what I would like, um, uh, if, if the board, please, the board is, by the time we go here and adopt the use of this fake ID. As a form of, uh, identification.
Oh, yes. That's. Um, I did have a question for. The, um. So, um. The. The community resource. Like you, you know, I do work with, uh, senior citizens too. Or, no, I don't so. Um, of course, when all those such things. Is there anything you can put in there to? Uh, some of the senior citizens can't do themselves, but the children. To have them directed to programs that can, you know, help seniors who are starting to suffer from dementia. Are often victims of self-madness because they can't do anything themselves anymore. And, you know, they tend to. And, you know, they tend to. Each train, and the way around it, in our car, you drive, buying houses, sometimes it's seniors. So, and I've got some resources that I pass out when I get on the case. But I'd like to get together with you and over some of those resources. Uh, to see how we could maybe, um, follow Hispanic folks with all that category to some of these, uh, resources.
Which is not familiar, the one that is, uh, taking the middle on that is Ingrid Castro. Could, Ingrid Castro?
Oh, did just come out.
Okay, okay, yeah. She's with the.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. We got a whole list and, uh, but it's, it's in English.
And if, when, uh, the local center, uh, opens, we can house a lot of information there for all residents. So that would be a good spot to, to put this type of information where can you pick up?
Yeah, the, um, the request form that actually came out of my understanding, like a, a district meeting, that many residents were requesting that, so that we agree. It will help not only the English and non-English.
Yes.
And then the question regarding the cost projections now, um.
And some stuff is free and some stuff is, you just want to have, no?
Not necessarily. Um, the, the, more of the ones that we, that were not in, um, the presentation. Um, but it was more just like, I don't know, it's, these are the things that.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yes. Uh, because the ones that are listed there, those have been, uh, organic cost impact there, like they've.
And some of these are already going to achieve.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, that person could come up, it's fine.
One of the things about that problem, she wants to follow you.
Hi, and that helped one more time last time, and that's Parks and Recreation. And Paul Braxton and Jack and I have discussed the possibilities at some point. Uh, as we know before, I think we will get an opportunity to come in and look at this and start that process. From the onset, we talked about, uh, as soon as Paul Braxton came down, uh, it would be a good idea to have a plan for it to go back because that is still regardless of how you look at it, it would be down at one facility. So when we get the segment up and running, uh, the better off that we will be, so. Uh, hopefully by then, the next meeting will have that, or where we can go ahead and put that on the table and with our. All right.
That could really, and that's, if I'm, I peruse the part of, and I'm not there yet, but, you know, did indicate, um, prepare renovation improvement of existing facilities. I think, uh, that may cover the Paul Braxton, if we're lucky enough to get the part of.
And we may have to start doing some cording, I think, uh, uh, Mount Neers in the room, I, I know Irish relatives is in the room, uh, if we may have to start working some of these. Maybe we'll see if we can, cause I'm not just funding, so at least allow each cornerstone and each landmark. All this, insane country. Appropriations Act. Direct program and projects.
Okay, so if you all remember back in April of twenty-four, when they were so excited, when they were earmarked for the, um, drinking water state appropriations fund of sixty-nine million dollars to expand the wastewater treatment plant. And, um, they took, uh, the state, that was less the three percent fee they took. Um, so the state has now reduced their admin fee to one and a half percent. So that increases our funding to one million ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So what I'm needing tonight is for approval of a resolution accepting the updated two thousand and twenty-three appropriations at direct, directed projects grant offer in the new amount of seventy-one thousand, or pardon me, seventy-one million six hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, I need, let me brag on a little bit. And then, um, I'm also gonna need a second motion to approve the amended capital budget ordinance.
All in favor, there can be no outside of that, but all opposed in the same right. I'm scared, we see, oh, clearly. This is what I'm probably saying, here we amend the, uh, capital budget offering, all in favor by a sign of that. All opposed, I'm just, I'm hearing that much, you carry.
Each time you say you have a thirty-dollar, I'm a book yes.
But I did wanna kind of explain to y'all a little bit. If you look on the modification letters, this page thirty-six of eighty-two of your packet, you'll see the previous funding offer amount, and then you'll see the modification amount. And, um, so they re, they basically refunded us the million ninety-one thousand. And then we had another one point five million that was unallocated, but it does have to be used for, um, water projects. So that one point five is how you get to the math.
Hey, now, I'm glad you brought that out because it was brought to my attention the day that we sent out letters. With lead and, and some of our heights, I was not aware of that because I never opened my order. But it came out sometime back, uh, my, I don't know how long, but what the citizens told me. So I'm hoping that we can start to regulate that. I don't know what the finding was. I don't know how bad it was. I don't know if it was.
That went out, that was, uh, that's a state requirement of, uh, telling residents pay. There might be led in, basically, uh, but we don't know what kind of violation is. There's a chance that it could be led, it should be checked. And also to advise them that the, the state, at the state level, they have a grant program where residents can, um, if they do in fact have led, tend to get low interest loans from the state to fund their domicile, uh, getting advice.
Thank you for that clarification and, uh, we need to make sure that people understand that there, um, there's money available to get those fights out of there. That's their destination. But thank you for that. I have no idea because it could be in the house, it could be from the meter to the house. I don't, I don't know, I'm not getting into that. Real else, I really don't know. Um, that would be something after the test start that it, you separate out who it belongs to and who has to take care of it. So I, I'm not even gonna test that. Uh, there's, uh, we don't have any water people in here, so we're just keep moving because I'm definitely not getting it fast.
So how this, how this came about was, um, part of the inspections were done by the, the folks that installed the water meters. So this was part of the, um, mandated by the state of North Carolina, and they checked them all when they were putting the water meters in. And so how, Public Utilities Director Chris Nacorfield explained it to Town Manager and myself was that there were findings and it's from the meter to the house. And that's why separate grants, um, would be available to these residents, um, from the state of North Carolina, not directly from the house.
Where did they check it at? And since we're gonna dig down into that because as Commissioner Austin just said, it's a very distinct possibility that it is out. So we need to really, instead of, until we know, we need to be that long.
Right, well.
To we actually know that we know who's.
Right, and Chris, I apologize, Chris isn't here to answer that question, but he's been very, um, you know, involved in it. He's the one who's been out all of the letters and has worked with the company and the state.
Well, I, what I'm saying is, I really don't want to get something starting and a rumor and this, that, and the other, and we don't know. So maybe they're all, and, and, um, a good friend somebody left may know more about that, but we're still gonna leave along, so. And so we find out.
Right, of course, yeah, yeah.
We definitely want to bring that up again, because that's a lot of money that's held out.
Yeah. All right, new business.
Now, that, that, I think, um, Chris isn't here, but the, um, state appropriations money is for, um, the wastewater treatment plant, um, projects. I think that's how the state earmarked it. I don't think it can be interchanged with other programs, but John, is that correct? Yeah. But there are, there is funding, there is funding available from the state of North Carolina to help residents in the event of that.
Boy, I, I will say this one last time, you need to get somebody on it, so we do know where it is, who it is. And so how would they go about getting this testing done?
And I found out, yes, I'll reach out, yes, I'll reach out to Chris and give her further, a little better clarification on that.
Now, that's the question, if, if, so with the, um, with us merging in Sanford, if we were to look into grants for projects, I think I have to address the infrastructure with pipes here. Is that something that, that we're responsible for or would Sanford be responsible for that?
I don't think there's anybody responsible. And what the mayor's suggesting probably is a conspiracy thing. And that's kind of what this is all about, but most of this is all private.
No, no, not, not, not responsible for, I mean, as far as grant applications, if we're looking for funding sources, um, to help our residents or help whoever the town, whoever, whoever is responsible in that sense, who, who would be the, um, entity required to write or apply for the funding? Would it be us?
If it does deal with the budget and grant, then for that, you have a conversation certain.
Twice, two for utilities. Utility agents, you said, I didn't hear what you said.
And specifically with this one, this is for pipes on the homeowner's side. So the town could apply for grant and run a program like that, but it's ultimately the homeowner's property that is in question. Thank you.
Yes.
So majority of those on the homeowner's side are through the HUD or RAN. There is some through the U W Y, which is Department of Water and Water Management, from Miss Carolina. And those are usually on the municipal side. And there's sometimes there are brief, clean hub and Department of Water Management structures combined assessments, but those do exist as well.
You know what I'd like to see? I, 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 I would love to see something where all of this is put together to where we know where we, how we're moving forward. Now, I mean, a piece here, a piece there, and, and, and it's really confusing to everyone. And I appreciate that information, I'm just, we need to put it together, we need to back it up. It's okay, now what are we going? So we, because of, you know, I don't see it, so you have to wait. Yes, sir.
Maybe.
Yes.
Um, well, I spoke to a caller about this phenomenon and, uh, he believes that the, um, issue might be small, even if it exists at all. But one thing he did caution me about was getting too much government involved, because we don't want our houses condemned.
Sure.
If there's a problem, so I live in an older part of town, I got that. I don't want to be put out of my home while people say you've gotten it. So there we are, there's. So I'll, I'll have some major problems if that's, if that's what happens.
Yeah, and I, I have been working with them and they may be one of those things there. You walk very lightly and very slowly. Get where you're trying to get, so you're right. Uh, I was in Booming, over there, there was a park.
Eric, I'll, I'll take that, amazing, as much as that is, that is pretty much just a, a grant we received in finance, related to the love tree, come again, the tree box later. Uh, E S P was the highest number of files for rapid occasions, uh, you know, in one month. And, uh, we were hoping to be awarded a power grant, I mean, um, track grant, which will make these improvements in terms of the flood problem, and particularly with the shopping center, and that's, uh, love tree treasury to area. And so tonight, we're just asking the board to consider, uh, authorizing a name by signing a contract with the party.
Finishing the motion to.
Resolution.
Prove that. And it's, it's helping the flood.
Our, specifically the purchase of art, it, it.
Where are we purchasing, um?
Um, that's, that's, these, I mean, other things are considering.
So we have purchases to, to restore the string.
The property is off Third Street, is the larger one, the covered size.
Off of what string?
Off of Third.
Third.
By Third, that number where the, the power line goes down through that section of the traffic section down. One on the side and one is on the other side of that power line on that southern side of the ocean. That's the first phase one acquisition of this property.
Which then allows restoration or repair of the string.
And like I mentioned, in Paris, you can control some of the flooding and keep some of it upstream for a longer time. And strap rent is already allocated to cover, uh, segments one and four. We're given that plan here in the study process, it's those first two, but there's segments on the outside.
And, and that would help with all the flooding that goes downstream as well, correct?
Yes, that is, that was the primaries of that property, come like a twin water farm. And the first piece is to do the string restoration, we have properties, that string restoration, it should match to that part.
Okay.
Three pages are in that plan. Eight pages, so it starts with you, we're sorry now, we'll get to things that, uh, pass over this.
Well, I like the motion when you, uh, approve status, well, I'll tell manager, you decide to execute a project. For the purposes of stating.
I'm going to probably second that we approve, uh, allowing, um, now manager to sign this contract. All in favor, there can be no outside of that.
Aye.
All opposed, have the same right, hearing that, motion there. New business seven point one.
As the mayor, this is thirty pounds new provision.
So, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about, uh, buildings and grounds, an additional position that we're requesting tonight. Or we can request, um, the commissioners can request town staff to go back and get additional bids. So one thing that John and I have been paying a lot of attention to is different line items across the budget, um, different expenditures and what we can do. So it has come to our attention that outside vendors for landscaping maintenance have cost the town in upwards of seventy thousand dollars.
Over what time period?
For one year.
For the most recent year, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, um, so we done a lot of research. I'm just gonna get my notes out here. So what John and I, we've kind of looked at is the amount of hours that are spent on the different properties across, um, the library, the airport, town hall, fire department, just all the town properties.
Is the graveyard included in that?
Uh, no, sir, only, um, printing the.
So graveyard's additional to the setting?
Yeah, uh, public works, currently most of the graveyard. Um, we're paying approximately eight hundred dollars a year for outside contractors to trim some shrubs out there. So, so, um, so far this year, we've spent in upwards of, just to one contractor, sixty-eight thousand dollars. For mowing. Um, town hall was approximately, um, fifteen thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Police department, six thousand three hundred and eighty. Library, six thousand four hundred and seventy-two, and that, let, let me, um, point out, the library is no mowing. That is only mulching, spraying, and printing. The public works department has to mow the library. Fifteen thousand three ninety-two possibly. Um, the airport, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars downtown, which only is, um, printing and trimming trees. Three thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The welcome signs coming in and out of town, twenty-five hundred. So total.
You talking about just, just the area? Weeding around eleven percent.
Yes, sir.
You're not talking about, and we're saving.
So, so, yeah, so, um, so approximate cost of mulch that we paid for last year, just out here around this area was nine thousand three hundred dollars. Approximate cost out of the figures that I've, um, given y'all for spraying and. and, um, putting out some fertilizer is near twelve thousand dollars. So, um, right now, John and I have been able to approximate that, basically, we're getting six hundred and forty hours a year from the vendor.
Or seventy thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Six hundred and forty hours.
Yeah, that's twelve hours a week scattered across the properties.
For sixty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Was it seven or sixty?
So sixty, sixty-eight, let's just say sixty-eight thousand.
Seven hundred and six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The, uh, so like, the, the downtown areas, um, this, this, what?
Printing the trees downtown.
Is, is, so.
But public works, our town staff has had to come in and do this work.
On, on top of that.
Yes, sir, and spray, yes, sir. So, so one thing that I wanted to, uh, so if you'll look on page forty of your packet, and you'll turn, pardon me, look at page forty-one, you can see that adding an additional employee is going to cost us about the same as this outside contractor. So if you look at it like that, you can say, okay, well, it makes no difference for us to bring another staff member in or just another vendor. But if you look at hiring a full-time town staff, they would contribute to approximately thirty hours because you have to give, give or take ten hours going back and forth, loading your equipment, getting ready. That would give the properties, increasing the man-hours to one thousand five hundred and sixty man-hours for the year. So.
Six hundred and forty man-hours right now.
Yes, so if you had hired a full-time staff member, and let's just say they gave us thirty hours of work a week, they work forty hours a week, but let's say, let's give or take driving time, you know, equipment maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. Thirty hours a week at fifty-two weeks a year, this is just average, that would give us one thousand five hundred and sixty man-hours.
Versus the five forty, is that one person, is that an entire?
No, that's, um.
Does entire company?
That's typically two to three individuals.
Can one person do this job?
So we also have our other position. And that's a, that's a consideration, and that's a, that is a consideration.
Do we do any seeding?
Yes, the front lawn is the only thing that's ever seeded, and then I found out that they are, um, over seeding parts of the airport with Bermuda seed.
We do that?
The contractor does that.
O- o- one of the things that I get concerned about is the number of complaints we get year-round about public works not getting their current work done, not getting stuff picked up, not getting stuff mowed. I mean, every board, the mission's constant, yes, and so I, I like to save money and I want to make a good choice, but I'm also worried that we are gonna put more of a burden on our overburdening department in that one person, although it will be an alleviation of some of that burden that, that, that person's, this new person's gonna be stretched too thin, and that, um, it's just gonna bring it on by, uh, above the neck on work, so can you talk just a little bit about that?
So, so what a, one recommend, or one thought, the thought process that I did have was looking at certain parts of the property, and the, the, um, airport is your biggest monster, as far as I'm aware, and period for. Um, town hall, police department, fire department, even downtown, and we already mowed the library. And our public works department's already having to come in and give us support because things aren't getting done by the contractor, they're already having to do certain things anyway. Um, so what I considered was the front lawn of town hall does look great. Is separating that out and letting the contractor continue to keep that, that I would only feel comfortable if we bid that out, like we're, you know, for our fiduciary responsibility. Um, so that would be another option.
To split in the work a little bit.
Splitting the work and. No, 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 and that would be, you know, so it's not thrown all in one department at one time and make it manageable. Um, that is an option, um, but that would be, I think, if you were gonna let the contractor stay, give them the front of town hall, but again, we would have to let other people bid on that.
Once you've got multiple contractors. Yeah, like you, like you said, when people get the airport, it's a monster, and somebody would be involved, then we give you a good bid on them.
So, we found out that, uh, that's what's not, what's, the big power portion's not what's killing us, it's them having to come back in with the, the finishing hours.
Honestly, yeah. Well, we, you know, we get multiple.
You bid out different parts.
Yeah.
And just put out multiple bids for different jobs and amalgamate them into one. Is there a way to get some cost comparisons, like if we did hire this person, but and he did projects, eight groups, D, contractor did, you know, E and F, or like Curtis says, you know, get a chart, show them maybe what we could get. Bid now, all the different ones, different people, let's kind of get some flow charge to see where this double cost falls, when, when do we have to leave up with this particular?
Dylan and I and John were meeting with the contractor this morning, and we told him that there was, it was being brought before the board tonight, um.
What's the time right now?
Well, he's as business as usual, um, because if you don't approve the other, a, a free port to come in house, we do have to bid it out, we do have to allow other contractors to bid on it regardless. Um, because again, this is almost a seventy thousand dollar contract. That we have to, you know.
Even if we piece new, still they put that.
We do.
Because every part, so it kind of spends.
Right, yeah, everything's over the five hundred dollar.
Except for the one that Commissioner Houser had to get a weed or.
The stabs.
And split that one.
It's, you know, what is gonna come back instead of being, we have no idea. So, bid it out and see what it looks like. And, and it's still not feasible, then we're looking at lots. Because I, the, the biggest figure is one person, and I know what that, one person cannot do that. I'm a part of public works, where we already get, but there's garbage on my streets that's been there for a month. To give an example, that's not enough, that's, that's just what I'm telling you. Uh, there's leaves that's still on the ground, and so we're getting these complaints. So adding the burden to them, I don't take it far to them until they get where they need to be.
Right, I understand.
Do, um, what's our, how much time do you have to massage this issue, what's our downtime before? Obviously, the spring is gonna pick up, but is there anything that has to be done between now and spring that is, that's, um, you know, important and, and hot?
So what we will do is we'll put out mulch, but I did tell the contractor this morning that, um, I did not want him to put out mulch until we revisited that, because I did want to obtain different quotes, and we would possibly already do that up, that in-house because our beds need some work, um.
Who are they spraying?
I'm not a hundred percent certain, I know there's very different fungicides and roundups.
Just trying to play it safe, round up.
Probably.
One, one thing that does, um, hit me, as, uh, Commissioner Houser said, is one hundred and six dollars an hour. I know there's overhead, and I know there's maintenance, but seems to be a lot from all grass.
Let's see, Adrian took some of the rebid, he's sent their contractor at least tried to.
What was the contract, they?
So there's not a contract, there's not an active contract.
We just pay the bills from the.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, there's not an active contract, and now that John are, are aware that there is not an active contract, it must be bid out.
Well, that's.
We've been getting here since twenty eighteen.
But that does give me what's.
It does.
So this has been away since twenty eighteen.
Yes, Mayor Grimes is the one who hired, um, or, um, that, this is what the contractor, Houser, wanted him, him to come.
That was under, you may.
Yes, sir.
It was the same contract from six years ago.
Yes, um, he could, no one can, um, provide me with a contract. Yeah, I think it may have been back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but it was at the time, um, around, I believe, nineteen thousand dollars.
Unbelievably competitive.
So that's going from twenty to seven, or fifty thousand dollars, wow.
Yeah, so that's again, that's it, that was, uh.
Well, and all that, gentlemen, that is going in and to us, I think, the, this personal uh, meter process is what we know to see.
Yeah, and he was, you know, he was not upset, he completely understood our position on the, on the matter, and I was extremely honest with him, and I told it exactly that we were gonna either propose a new position tonight, or it would go back, it would have to go to bid.
I do like Commissioner Brown's idea, what, what can we give if we bid about a piece of this? That's interesting. Because I, you know, you don't know the answer to the.
Right, right.
And is that enough direction that we can talk about?
Can we just, Liam, do we need a motion for them to, for the, um, for us to move forward with the press for proposals?
Probably have this consensus, but I mean, there's no reason I can move on.
I'll look at motion moving forward with, uh, uh, researching controls and putting out the bids back in.
The move is about to second, then we do the research and set up, um, be a proposal, so they're letting on by side of us. All votes have the same right here, who cares? They thought the.
There's some, when we saw about, uh, firms, and I sort of repeat the fact, really, the people turning up to provide the presentation that he had uh, enjoyed a while back, and so just to pull you our supporting measures, uh, keep anything to add or offer about, uh, relationship and, uh, attending the events, events anywhere as well.
Uh, no, we, we've attended the two events they had in twenty twenty-four, and, uh, we're gonna attend the event April issue.
So, so we're, how are we sitting on the place by day? Uh, we're attending events, but, um, not seeing them yet, uh, in the office. So I guess I'm just wondering where we are as a community on that, and if there's any, you know, from, from your perspective as our chief law enforcement officer, is there any steps we can take?
Uh, they're out there, um, you know, often, you know, so, and, you know, coming in contact with some of the public. Uh, you know, they, they do a really good job in the presentation, not a government, I think, yes, at that point. Uh, uh, to everyone that's there, uh, we haven't had, I sent the PowerPoint, that's all our officers, so we'd be well aware of what's coming, we actually have one officer set through the whole process and got all the ideas. Uh, so, uh, but I haven't heard any conflict from my officers related to it, I don't, I don't hear anything related to that.
I can see just applications, just evolve, if somebody coming in, because we got a call to a family, and they sent somebody to pick up a document, revealing who that person is, and we need a photo ID, but they're coming to pick up a check and we want photo ID. Uh, you know, so I can see why I'm just every day calling out applications, I was following order, I would expect to be, you know, seeing it.
And I was sharing with Jack the other day, I was over in that shovel hill, and this big bus did him up over my, and on the side of it, get your fake ID as soon as possible. So it is becoming something that is being acceptable and, um, um, more so than now, identification is going to probably be something that we really need to stress. more so than now, identification is going to probably be something that we really need to stress and have and acceptability of all forms of ID, whether they're federal or this size or household. Because this country is saying, accepting all forms of ID, I don't see why we would not adopt and be in support of the faith ID.
Are there any, Elon, are there any efforts right now since this idea is used by refugees, homeless, immigrants, elderly, social service workers, people who probably are being released from prison and reentering society? Are there any like collaborative efforts with other agencies that serve those populations to help push the faith ID? Or is it, or is it? I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out what I'm trying to ask. I guess is there, is there any way to strengthen the efforts with collaboration with other agencies or organizations?
I think certainly a lot more can be done about that, about expanding the acceptance of the faith ID. In the chat, what has happened is that the town county libraries are now accepting faith ID to register. So there has to be more outreach on our part to different entities, organizations, and even private businesses to promote the faith ID as an acceptable form of ID for them. So they understand how it comes about. So yes, some, some more outreach is needed.
Also work with churches to be able to share this information with their church and then we've worked with the town or the shelter.
But not the anti programs yet.
Well, we're, we're working on. We joined our, my, my, it's come up. They moved it to February.
Yeah. And the support from y'all to the strategy to where that, or that are you coming of the.
Are you getting emails from our country group?
I don't think so. Who's, who's sending it up? Uh, no, I don't think so. I'm not necessarily on the meeting.
Considering, I guess the population served, are, are there like local places that, that these populations can go to to get a faith ID? Would they have to go?
No, it's just during the drive. There isn't, because it's a whole process. And part of that process to get the faith ID is to hear the presentation, understand what it is, what it is and what you can use for, and also have a conversation with local law enforcement. So that's why partnership, we started to do the department, the chief, and these folks coming is so important because a big, a big aspect of the faith ID is building trust with law enforcement. And so, and the chairs department comes as well. So.
I sent them the presentation and watched how this has worked out. I don't know if you know this, Mark, but the Board of Elections now is issuing an ID. So everybody is trying to make sure that the identification of that individual enters is something that we recognize.
I'll keep me on the fact here. Think I have other thoughts here, or I'm just off track. But they started, they had one in April, ten twenty four. So are they already issuing them?
Yes. What we are, what we're doing is supporting the faith ID as a community.
But they're already doing it.
Say what?
But they're already.
But it's not officially from the town that we support this effort.
So, so would the town, so the, so the town would accept it as a form of ID for establishing water? Like as far as municipal operations, but certainly not for long for snout as a driver site. It doesn't replace a government or many other types of IDs. It's, it's, it's an ID card that we will support through.
Yeah. So I got a question. I don't know if anybody's here for our department, but John, okay. So like, you know, we do a closing and we transfer these to family A to M and P. And the person with the D, the hand, the water turned on, you know, come up and use that going.
The faith ID, you need the water turned on? Yeah, they would need something to, like, we require something either social or, I forget the number that.
I can.
Yeah.
And you were, and I don't even require the D or some proof that lands in the name.
Yeah, like we usually saw on a chat kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I can be certainly over the topic of the D, but.
Yeah, this will be acceptable.
Okay.
Because you're usually required around like twenty dollars and like proof of ownership or or at least three.
Well, I think it's a good program.
Can we, is it, how do we, I guess, like, really outlaw how, how we're gonna support it? Is there other specific things that?
I just think if you have a general statement like that, we are in support of the faith ID efforts. I mean, it sounds like any town in Cooley has things. It's, it's sound like everybody sitting in the room is talking in favor of it. Our chief of police, town manager, system manager. So then we just issue a general statement. We and so kind of this kind of liaison.
And we need that written out, I've got, and now, now the steering dedicated officially assigned and dashed in.
It's a resolution.
Do we need to, it would be like a, something else we've done, like a rare ass resolution, present it. And we can do it and like increase intention to the Hispanic liaison. Like a nice little.
Wouldn't they make a proclamation?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
I, yeah, I think I would do.
I don't know if they've done a proclamation about it, but we did want to have a, certainly affirmed and also affirmed that we are accepting the faith ID.
I don't think, I don't have the water to do it and just get it down.
They already go to the year of twenty seventeen.
A couple of things. Two hours later tomorrow. Public Works get back together and plan for doing whatever needs to be done for Ronnie. They have his staff prepared to be careful of what they use. So we got that all prepared and give you pretty much. Speaking of public works, lead pickup schedule, they're currently on the north side. So we do not see them, they're not in the knowledge. They're currently on the north side. They can show there are those to the south side and they're gonna complete the south side. And then they're gonna come back to the north side when they complete, this season will be beginning for them. And so, I'm thinking originally that Lucy would be in January seventeenth. And so we think we'll be around that day or after. And then after that point, obviously the lead will be bad. The, the lead machine will run through two more cycles of picking up leads.
Why doesn't line to the leads are?
I think that's traditional, how it's worked. They, they, you pick a certain date where you just kind of close it, you know, the season. And that's the thing, they're gonna pick up anything on one more side and then go back to the side. They'll have two more rounds on each side. And that will be the full program. They're finishing up the south side this week. They didn't set anything to schedule date, but Lucy will be, but we probably can't even pass that until we finish up that one side. Another grant, our grant we received a couple of weeks ago, weeks ago, Sarah in the planning department came and worked with a consultant to apply for nine hundred fifty thousand dollar CDVT in our grant. We were awarded. So that's, that's good news for us. And there are four homes that were selected that will be completely done by the replaced. It's Bob's, it's Bob's or having a house, then we relocated, bring back. So we did three of those a couple of years ago and this is one of them.
And we both on those.
We downed it. Before resignation, I'll start with the team. Yeah.
Well, kind of, Jay, introduce the new major. Jerry Ashton's come to us. He has fifteen years of experience for a police department. Larry went ten years assistant chief at High Point University Campus. Great for, glad to bring Jerry on over with us.
But another recognition, Tyler is a, he finished the leadership, but of course with the county. Yeah, the last thing is Landis solid, the basketball goals, I believe, have been installed. We're just waiting for the resurfacing. Yeah, the weather to warm up so we can resurface. As I said. Men's solid been repaid, those are up and I think the time would be, it would be in the structure. Last thing I've made is my calendar, I have a lot of things, it should do many things. It runs through anywhere fifteen, December thirty. With meetings and such that we got going on and it's all got accepted.
Did you get the breakfast, the slated?
That is in March, March third. We have a legislative breakfast that the mayor's talking about. That, that being here we're invited to by the county. I won't be able to be there today. I have a colleague in county, so Kim will be in my state. So you and Kim, we can attend, the county's advantage to be a part of the annual legislative break.
And then the E C is.
There were less, they just have a record. The, the normal board directors meeting, it's gonna be a deal.
And also someday that we will be paying the E C twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty four dollars and forty cent.
It has part of. Yes, sir.
All right.
I got some questions.
Yes, go right ahead.
I have three. So the first question was, I just wondered, did our full time park companies would get a holiday tag?
Yes.
Did they go back to November as the Thanksgiving?
It was only effective as per the motion you guys did, the water to be given out for that twenty seven. So it was, it was only that eight area.
Also, so where are we with the new goals at Grant, Grant's Eugene?
So the new goals, they take about six weeks to get fabricated. And just about five weeks ago is when we got it approved to go forward. So I'm just waiting on the contractor, who does that bill? And then he, he's gonna give me a call and schedule a time to install.
So we're, we're in the short run.
Yeah, we're only telling.
All right. My third question is, where are we with the renovation of the bathrooms in Washington?
The renovations, right now the bathrooms are winterized.
Because didn't we talked about getting, they need to be removed before we.
The toilets and the toilets have been replaced because they, but one, I think one's damaged and they both had a leak. So the toilets have been replaced. And I know Cindy with the manager office helped to get new spencers. They, they haven't been installed, but they wanted to cut off some buildings because there's no heat to winterize the building. And then we do have, actually this week, a lot of new lists to, to ban.
Because we had mentioned once we got the bathrooms and stuff that we have like a little celebration, you know, because we got the new. The new basketball court available. And we'll have our bathrooms ready to go. Of course, I know you won't wait for it because you want one, but just wanted to keep that on everybody's head. Ground breaking time.
Bring it down as soon as, soon as we get more weather.
Whatever you have to say here. But everybody see, if you have, if they're not busy, they receive all the things that has happened over in Washington.
Look at that, our county will work on that.
And this isn't a question, it's just saying that I did write it at the spray park and, and the porch looked a lot whole or a lot better. That was for my interest. It'd be nice for the concrete.
Enter, enter to the gate.
The, the gate.
Yeah.
And I guess I do have another question. Are we still considering getting some type of restroom facility at Bolin Lane Park? Because I went walking the other day and there was a lot of people there and I'm sure that it was the, this, it becomes necessary so kind of the people.
So I know that's still on the bucket list.
Yes.
Yeah. But so we still got that on. I just want to keep bringing these things up.
I just want to add to that expression. I know that previously when the, or the Parks and Rec Department's national plan was adopted with all of, and getting where potentially February on the, where we're at in implementation. So I, I haven't worked on comparing the presentation for y'all.
I just like to keep these, so that you know I want to, to remind the whole here, if we talked about this, this is what we are. But thanks for everything that you have already done for the partisan day. You were kind of shaking them and looking pretty good.
How much longer on that sign?
So we were only able to obtain, we were only able to obtain so far one bid. From an electrical contractor, we require three. The second one has not showed up. The third one will not call us back. So right now we only have one bid. So I have to give a statement to our finance director to see if he'll allow me to go with the one and so we sold quote.
I thought she said it was on the threshold.
No, sir. No, the threshold's five hundred dollars. The threshold for, you have to get quotes for anything five hundred dollars or more. You have to have three quotes for our purchasing of finance policy, anything above five hundred dollars. No, it was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in twenty eight, basically.